Good morning. It's Wednesday, January 28th. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting in the Senate hearing room. And as tradition, we will maintain that tradition and start with a Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, our first presentation is from SEDCOR Chad Freeman. And I don't know where your sidekick is, Mr. Harville is this morning, but I saw him on Friday. You give me an update. Welcome.
Unfortunately, thank you. Unfortunately, Nick can't make it today and we've got conflict. But I'm here with his updates and all of his, updates on all of his good work.
Okay.
Excuse me Chad, I don't know if that's picking you up on the microphone, if you'd a little bit closer, please.
Moving a little closer, is this better?
And we know there's people out there watching and listening this morning.
Good, good, good. First of all, I wanted to start with two kind of comments. Appreciate any patience that you may have, as I'm currently working on almost no sleep as we delivered our second child about 10 days ago. So if I feel a little, sound a little groggy, I probably am. So feel free to ask clarifying questions as well as help me make sure I can speak clearly. Also, and more importantly, I wanted to thank you as the Commissioner, as also as the county in terms of, we have had some opportunities recently to really work closely with you as well as see some of our colleagues and their work with their counties and recognize the strong support that economic development has from this body as well as from the county. And really the recognition and the importance of jobs for Marion County. And appreciate the ongoing attention to that from, brought by this body. With that, I wanted to touch base really on, for our quarterly report on three pieces. One, the general state, the economy that we see within Marion County and some of the trajectories that we anticipate. Second, as well, some of the work we're doing directed with those communities to help lay the groundwork for more economic success as well as understanding within Marion County. And third, a little bit about where SEDCOR is going strategically and some of the long-term work that we're doing right now as well. The first portion of that with the economy, we do continue to see ongoing improvement throughout Marion County as well as throughout the state, taking advantage of some of the broader marketplace increases. We've seen unemployment decrease across our county. We're seeing, from a more personal basis at SEDCOR, we're seeing a lot of companies that are hiring, doing expansions. Some of the concrete examples that we've talked about, we've looked at the project with Garmin. Their new building is being completed, believe this week, and folks are moving in there, which they've already added significant jobs there, including over about 50 in their call center. And then we'll be adding, I believe about 100 engineers at their call centers, excuse me, engineers at their Salem facility as well. Been an ongoing project, but nice to have that one completed. Forest River has, as we've talked about, I believe, last time, they're continuing to move, as they're moving into their building, their expansion facility in Silverton. Great opportunity, and they're starting, they're hiring right now. And then even projects like FedEx, which has completed another about 40,000 square foot expansion onto their distribution center in Mill Creek Corporate Center. So we are seeing companies that are putting financial investment here in our county and in our communities, as well as starting to hire people directly. The other part that we're working with, and we fully recognize that, and the core book of our work is always, as we've talked in the past, about retention and expansion, helping local companies, companies grow. And I think one of the pieces, and I think we'll hear later today as well, is the support of the county. And I know for the work with Forest River and some of the work both with this group as well as through the Economic Development Advisory Board to support that project has been integral. I think a great relationship and a great indicator of how public and private companies can work together to add, to add jobs. But building on the retention and the expansion piece, at SEDCOR, a piece of what we do as well as always about recruitment and finding new markets. In the next three months, we will continue to really work in terms of, this is the time to help us take our message about the advantages of doing, doing business here in the Mid-Wilmet Valley and take that to the national and international audiences. To do that, we'll be attending trade shows relating to food, food processing, as well as medical device manufacturing, kind of to play in some of the technology fields that we have. And finally, working with, working with Business Oregon to work in Japan and try to work with some companies there, both existing as well as new, and to highlight the opportunities that are here within our, within our region and within, in many cases, within the West Coast itself. So that's some of our forward thinking, how we're working to help recruit new investment into our region. But again, I always want to highlight that we see the biggest growth will always come from our existing companies and from our existing industries as well. To help that, then the next portion that I know Nick was, and you alluded to Mr. Nick Harville from SEDCOR, who's not able to make it today, but some of his key work has been helping communities get ready for these jobs. And he has championed and worked with many communities across the region around the business retention and expansion program. And really what this is, is SEDCOR working in concert with communities to highlight their strengths, their areas for improvement, as well as how they can work together as a community to help companies that are investing, that are right there in their backyards, as well as to meet those needs. And then how do we work, once we get that, we have somewhat of a plan for, plan to build together and to grow the economy, both with that community, with SEDCOR, and with the other participants as well. And that's really is kicking off, I believe, this week in Staten, which is our first pilot community. And they are going forward, I think it is Thursday, to identify who's going to be the lead entity for that within the community. And then we're working with them to continue to support those efforts. I know Donald and Jervis are also taking very leadership, lead role in this, as our first three communities out the gate. And really excited to be working with them to help them add that, that plan and build the basis for this economic growth in their communities. Finally, a little bit, then talk to some of what we're doing now, you know, the other portion is what are we doing looking towards the future? It's hard for me to believe, but I've been here almost more than two years. And so we have completely, coming to the end of the strategic plan that SEDCOR really laid out and worked with, when I, when I had started to make sure that I knew where we were going as an organization. So we're working with Board Chair Teresa Haskins, as well as with the support and help of Commissioner Kevin Cameron here as well, to build our new strategic plan. It will look, and I believe in conversations both with our stakeholders, as well as with our board and our executive council, that it will look very similar, with our focus will continue to be on growing jobs, growing investment, and really just clarifying as well, how we look to do that, taking a time to identify what's been successful and what do we need to improve on, and then how do we measure ourselves as well. So strategic plan is a big piece of that. Another portion as we are looking in the process of finalizing our new website, which will help to really highlight the business opportunities. One of the things that I've noticed in our website in the past, it's been a great job of selling some of the stuff that we do, but we need to highlight the communities that we work with, we need to highlight the business advantages here and do a better job of that. So we're in the process of repurposing that. And then finally, the third piece I wanted folks to know about is that on Thursday, February 26th, we are hosting, along with AKT and Oregon State through the Austin Family Business Program, trying to bring resources to the ag community that we've got here. In our work, a lot of what we notice is that both agricultural families, whether it be farm, food processing, or even, or even support industries and industries across our region are looking at how do we transfer to the next level of leadership? What is succession planning? What's going to happen to this company five, 10, 15 years down the road? And how do we plan for that? So SEDCOR is hosting a breakfast with the Austin Family Business Program. We'll talk about some of the strategies that are available for that. Would love to invite all of those here to that breakfast. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to show support for our ag community, as well as to bring some needed resources and, if nothing else, to start that conversation on how do you plan a, whether it's a transfer of a farm, transfer of a company, or a leadership of a manufacturing firm, frankly. So with that, unless there's, happy for any questions that there may be out there.
Well, thank you. I guess I'll be the first to say congratulations on the baby, and you didn't look too tired. You've made me think of a couple different issues. And one, I don't, I didn't hear you mention a lot, but on your papers you presented, large lot recruitment project. And it just made me think, and I don't know that I've ever asked you about, but are you aware of urban growth issues in Woodburn and what they've been trying to do? Because wouldn't that be, I don't know what Mill Creek has available, but about the best place that real development could go in with the freeway access and marginal farm ground and everything? And if you haven't been involved, I'm going to kind of follow it away because it looks like you'd be a wonderful source, kind of expert testimony of how not just Woodburn needs to see this growth, but the whole county and area does.
Great question, thank you. And I'll break that into two pieces. First of all, the large lot survey we've done has been a great study. We worked with a group of consultants that helped us, and we were banded together with all the metro, metro communities to look at those properties over 50 acres and what kind of manufacturing base would look at a project that big, recognizing some of the opportunities we have here, being both Mill Creek Corporate Center and ideally at some points, the Woodburn project as well, as you said, ideally situated. So really look at market opportunities, and I think that has been a great piece, both to help us identify new opportunities as well as help stabilize both our strength as well as, the third part is help us realize how ready are, how market ready and competitive our properties that we have now are, but also how the market's going to be. Now, the second part of your question, in terms of the urban growth expansion at Woodburn is something we see, backing up just a little bit, I absolutely think that would be a great place for, for business. It makes, has a ton of sense in terms of access to I-5. And I think it can help really support that community as it looks to grow. We have been and will continue to be involved in that issue. And we also see, I currently chair the Oregon Economic Development Association Legislative Outreach Group. And one of our key issues there is urban growth boundaries around the state, as you see, both with, the Woodburn example is a classic one. Newburgh has had some similar examples with property. How do, and really trying to get to the bottom of how do we look at this urban growth boundary differently to help communities have the jobs to support their community, rather than, I think that's really the key question that needs to be answered. And we're going to continue to work, work with that, both with the city as well as potentially with legislators as well, to help us bring that, and bringing that online, I think would be a great asset.
And then I got one, and I'm hesitant a little bit, I'm not trying to brag about myself, I guess nobody else does. But we had an involvement with the Austin Family Business Program. In fact, our company, I think it's about 1992 or 93, were the family of the year, the business of the year. And a great organization to be with. You talk about, you know, the succession planning and kind of things. I don't know, actually, my father died in 95, so we faced it not very long after that. And I don't know that it really helped me get through it, but I at least knew what was going on. And it certainly was great information to get out to businesses and families about what to look for.
Thanks, and I think that's really just, one of our keys is you may not have the answer, but having to start to think about it is just, because I think there's no way to, you can go through it before you do, but having that chance to think about it and put a plan together. But thanks for, and congratulations on Business of the Year.
Well, it's a long time ago, but nobody knows, so you've got to bring it up once.
Commissioner, congratulations on the ham sandwich, no, excuse me. Chad, thank you, and congratulations on your second child.
Thanks.
You know, it's really, it is the most important thing you're talking about today, so appreciate that. For those that are watching, you mentioned the meeting on February 22nd. I have it down as the, it's actually titled Planning for a Productive Family Farm Transfer is the title of it. In Marion County, we know agriculture is the number one agricultural county in the state of Oregon, so that's really important for us. And it's at the Fest Hall Room, 500 Wilco Highway Northeast in Mount Angel at 7:30 is what I have it down, so.
Yeah, and if it's okay, I can leave some flyers as well, and folks can always contact me for information on it, because it would be great.
So they would contact SEDCOR for signup?
Yes.
Okay. And your website is?
Sedcor.com.
I should know. Sedcor.com. Okay, great. The other thing that I would like to just make a comment on, and I think you mentioned it, is the business retention and expansion programs that Nick, and we also have some people that are working in our Community Services Department with AmeriCorps and, that are helping go out to those small cities and work to get that information. And I'm excited as somebody who sits on the Economic Development Advisory Board with the board there, getting some of that information to help us develop a plan with that information. Nick has also mentioned the timing of getting, and maybe you're involved in this, getting some of the civic leaders, the mayors, counselors involved in more of an economic forum on a regular basis when they get that information, so they can really work together and not against each other in economic development. Do you care to comment on any of that progress?
Yeah, and the first part, I appreciate you pointing out, this is a huge collaboration, both between public, private, or communities, the county, and the partners are very strong, and we really appreciate the support of the county and put in, in the work here. I think the other part of really, the idea here, as you, as you point out, was each community build a plan and then draw it together so that we are all, as a, as a region, working together towards the same plan. And I think, you know, where we see economic development, so oftentimes it gets couched as a, as a competition, but this really is cooperation. What helps one community will help another community in most cases around, if you're adding jobs, you're helping support your citizens, that's what we're all in it for. And I think being able to put those plans together and take that time to have that conversation, both within your communities, but then as well within the county, it's, it just makes a lot of sense and appreciate the support for that and look forward to seeing where this takes us.
Yeah, great. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thanks Chad. So next thing on our agenda is public comment, and there's nobody who has signed up, and I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Chair Cameron, we have a short list this morning, if a list includes one item, but under, I'd like to make a most approved, this consent calendar under Tax Collector Approved Order Designating the Woodburn Independent as a Newspaper for Publication of the 2015 Tax Foreclosure List.
I'll second your motion, and all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Oh, sorry. I'm new at this, right? And we'll go on, move on to action items. First action item is a consider approval of a five-year lease agreement with the Oregon Farm Bureau. And I believe we have Bruce Armstrong and maybe Mr. Latimer is going to have some comments too.
Mr. Chair, if I can, the board knows this, but I think for our viewers, I'll run through a little bit of the history of why we're doing this. We have a health department building that is, was built in the early 70s and needs major renovation because it's really a heat sink. It's, the windows are very porous. And so we're going to do a lot of work there, but in order to do that work, we need to move some folks out, including OSU Extension Service, which has offices in that health building. In order to do that, we have looked for office space for OSU, for the Extension Service, and we have found that space with the Oregon Farm Bureau. The county is leasing that space with the Farm Bureau. And then the, what you'll see in the second item here is an intergovernmental agreement with OSU for a sublease to put OSU in that space at the Farm Bureau. This is not only good for us, but it's, and the health department's also a good place, synergism with the Farm Bureau and OSU Extension. And what I thought I'd do after those comments, and then let Bruce talk to you a little bit about the lease and the IGA, because these two items are really work together. So if you will, Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bruce Armstrong for the record, with Senior Assistant Legal Counsel. As Mr. Latimer says, we have a proposed lease agreement with the Oregon Farm Bureau before you. And I was just going to run through some key points of the lease, just hit on some, and I welcome any questions you have, though. The lease is for 4,000, just over 4,000 square feet of space. It is a five-year lease, so it would expire in December, end of December of 2019. It does allow the county, however, to terminate before the end of the third year, so at the 36-month point, or at the 48-month point, if need be. And it also allows for two five-year renewals, so it could be extended further. We enlisted the help of Terry Fronmeyer to help find good space, and Derek Godwin with OSU Extension was involved in making sure that this space would, would meet their needs. The rent is $5,660 a month for the space. I think that if I remember correctly, that's at a rate of $1.40 a square foot. And as part of the arrangement, the Farm Bureau would pay all utilities, they would be, provide all janitorial services, other than the kitchen area, because they weren't entirely sure what OSU Extension, what kind of a mess they might make in their kitchen area when they're doing demonstrations or things like that. So they, to be, protect themselves, they wanted to leave it to us or to OSU Extension to clean up their, their messes in the kitchen if it got extravagant. So that, other than that, Farm Bureau covers everything. And then if I didn't mention parking, they provide parking. And Derek Godwin was involved in making sure that the parking needs would be met with what, what they have there at, at the space. The arrangement provides for the Farm Bureau to make tenant improvements to meet OSU Extension's needs, and as I understand it, they're ready to go, they've, they're going to turn around, and if this lease is approved, they'll pull the trigger and get that, those tenant improvements made ASAP. The commitment is that we have to approve that next step of what, what they do, but they already have a proposal that it would, the tenant improvements would cost no more than $55,000. And what the lease provides is, if it did exceed $55,000, the county would pay for that. But it, it doesn't look, that is not going to be the case. So it'll, there will, there will be no additional expenditure necessary for the tenant improvements to be made. What we, we made sure as part of this lease that the county is protected, and so if, we have no expectation of anything like this, but if the landlord failed to maintain a roof or an HVAC units, or provide adequate ventilation, or heat, or anything like that, the county could terminate if the landlord failed to maintain, or after providing notice. The county could also make repairs and then deduct the cost of those repairs from the rent. So just one of those things we've learned over the years that we want to make sure that the county is protected. We also included language that there's a measure before the voters coming up at the next election to consider creating a district for, an OSU Extension Service District. If that passes, then there's language in here that the county would be replaced within this agreement with the Extension District. So it still would be the, the board who would act as board for the district, but that change would be made, just to be clear. And that's, but that is pretty much it. It's a, it's a good arrangement, and as the synergy, I, it's a good, a good term to use, but I, as I understand, the Farm Bureau seeks to have like, similarly focused tenants in the building. It's a newly renovated building at Capital and Gaines. And so it looks like, it looks to be a good opportunity for OSU Extension and, and for the county. And I don't, if you want, I don't know if I can, I can jump, I'll jump into the IGA, that's your second item if you want. John made reference to it.
Why don't you do that, Bruce?
And basically, what we have here is, the county is going to remain obligated to pay rent, but the, what we have is, and what we need is, we have this IGA in place to hold basically, OSU Extension accountable to comply with the arrangements within the lease, that they comply with the use terms, that the, that any obligation to, is maintained on their behalf. So as long as we have this lease, which is in, entering into for, on their behalf, they are bound to comply with the use of, appropriate use of the premises. If they damage the property, they have to cover those expenses. They have to surrender at the, at the conclusion of the lease and things like that. So it, it basically ties everything together. The IGA lasts for five years also, and it can be renewed for two additional five-year terms. And if the lease, the county's lease with the Farm Bureau is terminated, the IGA between the county and OSU Extension Services is terminated also. So it basically, it's one of those things, it protects the county. So we wanted to run these two items together. So it's a, as you can see in the IGA, the, the lease is attached, and it basically passes on all the obligations that we have under the lease to OSU Extension.
Thanks Bruce, good work.
Chair Cameron, just one simple question, I didn't, you may have said I didn't hear it. So when will this be ready to go? Is there a target date roughly?
The target was, is February 1st. We had hoped to have this before the board last week.
I mean for actually moving in, Bruce?
I don't have an answer to that question, but I, I, as I understand it, they are ready to go, they may have, I think the Farm Bureau may have undertaken all tenant improvements that they could.
Anticipate.
Anticipating that this would go, but not wanting to go too far. But I think everything that would benefit them, I think they've, they've done. But they're ready to, they've, they are waiting the word to hear that this has been approved, and then they're ready to move. I can't give you anything more specific than that, but they're, they're very excited about having OSU Extension in there.
I think they're talking about mid-February.
Yeah. So just to clarify, Bruce, 8.3, there is rent abatement until they're ready to go, so if there's.
That's correct.
They're not going to start paying rent until the day they're.
Until it's occupied, until we say the tenant improvements meet our needs, or OSU's needs, and until we move into the property. So there's no rent obligation until it can be used for its intended purpose.
All right, then if I could, Chair Cameron, make a motion that we do approve the five-year lease agreement with Oregon Farm Bureau for office space at 1320 Capitol Street Northeast Salem.
I'll second, I'll second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'll follow up with the second, regarding the sublease, to approve the intergovernmental agreement with OSU Extension for the sublease of office space at 1320 Capitol Street Northeast in Salem.
I'll second your motion, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is done, and.
Thank you.
Thank you Bruce, nice work, always from our legal department, thank you. Community Services, we've got, Sarah is here to talk about the grant, Video Lottery Funds for Economic Development Grants. Welcome, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, my name is Sarah Kavasos. I'm Management Analyst with Community Services Department and Staff to the Economic Development Program. And I am bringing before you today the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Board Grants for 2014-15 Grant Cycle for the Oregon Lottery Economic Development Program. This grant program is working to achieve three goals, and those are to create and retain jobs in Marion County, support companies in expanding a product or service, and increasing outside sales revenue into Marion County. The grants target three specific industries, supporting companies in manufacturing, agriculture, and tourism. So on August 15th, EDAB released a RFA, a Request for Applications for the Grants, and closed the RFA process on October 15th. We received 11 proposals, and those proposals went through a two-stage review process. We did individual scoring of all of the applications, and then came together at the November and December, and December Advisory Board meetings, and reviewed the grants as a group. And they, in December, determined that they would like to recommend funding for seven programs. Of those seven, one declined due to a reduced grant amount. So what we're bringing forward today is recommendations for funding to six companies. So what we're bringing forward today is recommendations for funding to six companies. All of these companies are going to be creating jobs, and a couple of them are moving into Marion County and new to Marion County, and then others are just increasing jobs through to support product expansion. So the companies that they're recommending funding is Forest River Manufacturing, GK Machines, Henningson Cold Storage, Moraine Inc., Oregon Palette Repair, and Tree Frog Nursery. Our department has $200,000 budgeted this year for EDAB grants, and the grant recommendations total $195,000.
I'm sure you.
Well, I just have one, I'm looking through them, or have looked through them, but Tree Frog, it sounds, just reading at the, jobs weren't going to be created in this year, it says, does that imply then an opportunity to come back later, as that works, was that discussed?
So, their application originally said that they were going to create three jobs over a two-year or three-year process, so what the board did was they reduced the grant amount to only 5,000, because there's a criteria that they can only have 5,000 per job created, so the one job being created will be happening within the year duration of the contract.
But my, I guess, I guess I kind of know the answer, but if they won't continue, and it still looks valid, and it's going to create more new jobs in a subsequent year, they could apply again?
Yeah, they can apply again, yes.
Sarah, great work advising the EDAB Board and trying to get to this, this point where we're at today, I know that there, the history there has been, well, let's just say it's history, we'll leave it at that, and to get to where we are today, and in fact, the Henningson Cold Storage Grant, just so that Commissioner Brentano understands that one, that, that actually may go into next year because of, that's a project that they may or may not even do, but it would, if they do do it, it would create those jobs, and so we're doing some things there to hold that for them, and I know that next year, we're going to be actually getting into next year's grants coming up in like two months, the process, so nice work, and I know EDAB has, has spent a lot of time coming to this conclusion, and you spent a lot of time doing the research to get more information so we could even get to this point, so thank you for that work.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions there, Commissioner, before we.
No, I don't think so. I, well, you just bring up one, so I'm looking through Henningson, so that's going to be done next year, so the monies aren't actually released till next year, is that what happens? As they, is it, what trips the actual?
Yeah, so our approval of the funding will just trigger internally that we will be rolling the funds over into next year, we've worked with legal counsel, and our contract will begin July 1 for this project, because the actual disbursement of funds and grant objectives are achieved during next fiscal year. So it'll be a rollover, carryforward of funds.
And just for, because people wouldn't see this, it looks like it's a $200,000 project that we're providing about $50,000 for, is that?
Yeah, we have this funding criteria also requires that there's a three-to-one match, so for every $1 that the EDAB Board or County awards in grant funds, each company has to match that with $3.
Great. I am ready to make a motion if it's appropriate, and Chair Cameron, I move that we consider approval of an order approving Video Lottery Funds for Economic Development Grants to the following companies, Forest River Manufacturing, $50,000, GK Machines, $50,000, Henningson Cold Storage, $50,000, Moraine Incorporated, $15,000, Oregon Palette Repair Incorporated, $25,000, and Tree Frog Nursery LLC, $5,000.
I'll second your motion, just to, just to comment, just so that people who are watching, these are Oregon Lottery dollars that are given to the county, come back to the county for us to use for economic development purposes, so just to clarify, if anybody's watching, I don't know if we said that at the beginning. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, and I believe, thank you, Sarah, I believe that concludes our work, we have no public hearing today, so I'll read the schedule of where we're going to be. Obviously, we're here right now, on the 28th.
Are you sure?
I think, yeah. How am I doing?
Pretty good.
We forgot to welcome Ted, our newest person in community service, welcome Ted, we'll get you up there. On tonight, this evening, the 28th, Wednesday, from 6 to 9, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Annual Meeting, location is at the Red Lion Hotel, 3301 Market Street, Northeast Salem, and I believe we're receiving an award tonight, the county is. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 29th of January, from 5 to 7 p.m., City of Salem Celebration of Service, location at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem, I believe that's a celebration of some outgoing public service council members from the City of Salem. February 2nd, Monday, 8:30 to 9 a.m., Board of Commissioners Calendar Review in the Silverton Conference Room here at 555 Court Street Northeast. Also on the 2nd, from 9 to 11, Management Update, Silverton Conference Room, 555 Court Street Northeast. On Wednesday, the 4th of February, from 9 till 1, we have a board session right here, we get to do it again, and then on Wednesday, the 4th of February, we have our Woodburn, monthly Woodburn Marion County Meeting, location at Luis Taqueria at 523 Front Street, Woodburn, I'm hungry just thinking about that lunch next week. Anything else, Commissioner, that you need to share before we adjourn?
Probably don't need to share, just a thought I've had, John left early, and he's talked with me prior, that he'll be missing or not attending more of our board meetings as he starts the budget, and I just don't think people understand how important preparing that budget is, and how much time it takes each year, you caught the end of it, oh, midway through the process, but.
I got sworn into the next day we were having budget hearings.
Well, they start compiling it, and department heads, and elected officials, talking about each of their departments, and we spend time with each of them, too, so we get a better picture of what they need, and what's working, what's not, but it's a, it's a big process, and here it is January, and we're, the budget will take effect July 1st, so it takes six months to get to that point, so, I don't know if that's good or bad, but it just tells what an extensive project it is.
Well, and I just know from an outsider, and now being on an inside, it's, it is a long process, that most people don't realize how much work goes into it, but it's such a priority here in Marion County, that we have been good fiscal managers, so appreciate John, and the Finance Department, and all the people that, and then the department heads that have to put in all the time to do that, and then decisions will have to be made, so, yeah, that's going to go on, and we might not see John sitting next to us.
Not so much, but it's, what I might not have explained, that if, gets my attention, it's such a thoughtful process, nothing's just, oh, we'll just add 2% to this and go down the line, it's, it's thinking it through, and what really matters, and where it needs to go, and then we want, we have such, I think we, I have such thoughts on trying to send money to improve our facilities here in Marion County, to try to scrape together different sources, and make all that work, it's more complicated, too, but, just a big job.
Yeah, I think when John mentioned the Juvenile Department and moving OSU Extension out, I remember being over there and putting my finger on one of their window ledges, and from dry rot.
With the Extension Service, you mean?
Yeah, Extension Service, oh, that's the Health Department they're coming out of, but even Juvenile, the dry rot and the windows and just that, that's even older building than.
Yeah, it's a bad.
Health Department, so, okay, good?
That's all I can think of.
Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and thank you very much to those of you that are out there watching.